7:04. Adequate notice this meeting has been posted at Borough Hall, filed with Borough Clerk and mailed to the East Street Park Press, the Two River Times and the Star Ledger. No cases will be heard after 10:30 PM and the Board may adjourn for a recess at 8:30. Roll call notice.
Mayor Minna?
Here.
Thomas Welch?
Here.
Councilman Ballard?
Here.
Damian Cuso?
Here.
Guy Morata? Lou Dibetto? Gordon Boas? Mark Murney? Juanita Lewis? Asim Yasin?
Here.
Michael Terry? Dave Cassidy?
Present. Is anyone here for the resolution for the estate of Elizabeth Herbert, 61 William Street? Fine. We're going to move all of the administrative stuff and referrals to the end of the meeting. We're going to start with our first public hearing for Dr. Griffin at 76 East Front Street, Block 27, Lot 10 regarding a fence.
Good evening. Chad Mornkin of Arche and Grinder on behalf of Survive LLC. It's again Chad Mornkin of Arche and Grinder on behalf of Survive LLC. This is for an amended site plan with a variance for 76 West Front Street, Block 27, Lots 10 and 11 for the installation of a three-foot-high fence around the perimeter of the property with automatic gate. A variance is required because only two-and-a-half feet high fences are permitted within the site triangle of three feet as proposed. I've got Mr. O'Neill with me as our witness.
Hi, Mr. O'Neill's been before the Board many, many times, so I think that's why we have him first.
What it is right here is where to tell the truth. I'll switch to Warren, where your office is.
Edward W. O'Neill Jr.?
Mr. O'Neill, I'm not picking you up.
Why don't you sit down and speak into the microphone that's in front of you.
The table, what?
This one? Edward W. O'Neill Jr.? 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 And that's kind of the quandary, right?
Right.
Is that the ordinance calls for nothing higher than 30 inches being within the site triangle. Our client feels that from a visual perspective and the fact that it's a historic district that normally the corner is contained, and so she's asking for relief so that aesthetically the corner can be maintained, which is again typical of the Washington Street District.
And you believe, in your opinion as a professional planner, that the purpose of municipal land use law is advanced by that, for the goals?
Yes, and I say that because of the district. I think the district calls for that.
The important thing is you can see through it.
Yes, clearly.
You can't interfere with the vision through the site triangle.
No.
The vision or the safety issues of people.
Yeah, you clearly see through it.
And what kind of vegetation and planning are they putting in mind? Is that one block any of the view from that corner?
My understanding is that it's just the grass that's there.
Okay, because it looks like squiggly. That's just going to be lawn, there's not going to be any.
The squiggly line is a notation of when you amend a plant, you squeal to give the viewing people an understanding that that's the amendment. It has nothing to do with what's.
There's no bushes or vegetation in a site triangle.
No, not at all. It's literally just lawn.
Well, you think they can construct a site triangle. Do you want to make that a condition?
Yes.
We can make the conditions sort of.
Yes. You want to.
That's already in the ordinance, but if the question is not, it's in the ordinance, the question is enforceability.
And has that really needs, you need to be able to see around that corner.
Absolutely. And if the board's own granted with the condition that no planting things should be within that site triangle, then it's fine. Yeah.
So I have a quick question.
Sure.
You're asking for a variance of two-and-a-half feet to three feet. Why is it two-and-a-half feet?
Well, the feeling is that part of the problem on the site, which is why they're asking for a fence up, there's no fencing there, is that people are trespassing across the site illegally all the time, and they're finding that to be a problem. People are also parking illegally in their parking lot.
And that's the reason for the fence, but the difference between two-and-a-half feet and three feet in my mind is not that great, that you would be the benefit, so.
I guess they think the extra six inches will make it less likely for somebody to try to hop it. Two-and-a-half, they can make it try to step over, and three feet makes it a little more difficult. That's six inches, that'll make it a make me walk around the corner.
That's the rationale.
But you could put a two-and-a-half foot fence there, you just don't want. I mean, they make two-and-a-half foot.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes, yes.
The concern is that it's not going to serve the same function that the term for people. It's much easier to fence the hopper than two-and-a-half.
Which is why they're typically manufacturing three, three, four, seven, eight.
I'm still not convinced that two-and-a-half feet being within the allowable is out of that.
Michael, they don't make them in three feet, because I'm looking at them right now, and I'm looking at the 30 inches to have them in three feet.
Yeah, it's a custom.
Unless.
It's customized, you don't make them.
No.
I like what I have.
No, no, you could, I thought, yeah, custom made, but it's not typical. I didn't realize that.
That's terrifying.
That's why I said the number is three, four, six.
It's physically possible, but it's not a typical size.
Oh, you're big country.
Does anyone else have any questions? Please thank your client on behalf of myself on the Board for an amazing job they did on the property. It looks fantastic. It really does.
Thank you, yeah. It came out really well.
And she wishes she could be here tonight as a surgery evening, so that's why she's on here.
She's on hold for surgery.
Please come there, thanks. Do we have motion on the application?
So.
Second. Mayor Minna?
Yes.
Thomas Welch?
Yes.
Councilman Ballard?
Yes.
Damian Cuso?
Yes.
Gordon Boas? Yes. Asim Yasin?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next up, we have Den Holtz Associates, 101, 107 Oakland Street, Block 63, Lots 101, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10, and 10-1, seeking preliminary and final site plan approval again to demolish two additional structures on the site to construct a four-story mixed-use development consisting of 57 units. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, John Johnfield, who came down from the cease of appearance on behalf of the applicant, Den Holtz Development, and this is an application to seek preliminary and final major site plan approval for the property located at 107 Oakland Street, 1719 Herbert Street, where the parking lot is, and of course, the Long Bridge Avenue, Block 63, Lot 101, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10, and 10-1, Block 7505, Lot 1601, along with the building site itself, total of 1.645 acres. On that site is an existing office building that was divined on a remote parking lot, which will stay in place. This application seeks to develop 57 residential units along with retail, a cafe, and a two-level parking deck and office space. So it's a full mixed use, and it falls under the train station overlay zone, which requires 240, 245, 242 parking spaces, which are provided in the deck and up in the street location. And we also provide all the handicap spaces to be located near the building, near the activity, for reasons that we can explain. We do seek a variance for lot coverage. Ordinance permits 75 percent. The applicant requests 76 percent, but we also can demonstrate that on the upper decks there is a green area, amenity decks that will have over that 1% of green space that would be attractive. There's a loading space provided, but it is not in the exact dimensions the ordinance requires, and there's some setback requirements that are still existing and supposed in order to make the building lack a bit. And then there's a building of 175 feet, exceeds 175 feet in length, which is an ordinance restriction, but we have a lot of breaks in the building architecture to describe that, and setbacks, and the interior lighting as well, just as well. So with all of that, I'm going to ask for some variances, preliminary and final site plan approval, and I have several witnesses. I have Jim Kennedy, our civil engineer, Lance Blake, our architect, John Ray, our traffic consultant, and Andrew Janu, the planner, and to the extent that some of that testimony is not necessarily for the Board's review, we can of course consolidate that if needed. With your permission now, I'd like to call Jim Kennedy.
Mr. Johnson, just a quick point. Mr. Lashine, why don't we swear all of the proposed experts at the same time, okay?
That sounds good. If we're about to bounce a question, we can get an answer. Generally, you're all going to stand, and Mr. Ray, you're all square to tell truth. Nothing but truth.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ray, so Mr. Ray, identify yourself and.
John Ray, licensed professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates. I'll be doing the traffic engineering testimony.
Lance Blake, Robine and Blake Architects. I'll be testifying for the architectural building.
James Kennedy, Kennedy Consulting Engineers on the Civil Engineering.
Andrew Janu, professional planner, would be completing the consulting services.
Mr. Chairman, all four of the individuals have previously testified on this application. They were deemed by the Board to be considered experts in their respective fields. I see no reason why we can't move on loss to qualify all of them as experts in their respective fields.
I'll second that one, it's okay, thank you.
Let's swear in our professional, okay?
But.
Just swear that it's true, all truths of that information.
I do.
So everybody can have a professional.
Mr. Chinko, I have one question, if you can just clarify for me. Does your client own the parking lot that sits between Herbert and Leonard?
In the contract.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So with that, I'll call Jim Kennedy.
Good evening.
Jim, could you describe to the Board the location of the site and then describe the proposal for the Board's consideration?
Sure. In order to help me through the testimony and hopefully in understanding what I've offered as an exhibit is an aerial photograph with 200-foot radius map dated, the actual image is dated June 17, 2018, so this is taken last June, and it was prepared under my direction and control. It's labeled aerial exhibit in the bottom right-hand corner. I've provided 11 by 17, so if you'd like to mark my.
We'll mark the aerial view as A1.
A1.
And A state, 15th of October. And we'll mark the. Render, research, and development.
That's right. Site plan rendering with the date of October 4, 2018, again, prepared under my direction and control.
There'll be a.
So there's, here are two more copies.
Anybody in the ordinance, what?
Don't you leave them on the table. Don't go that way if someone from another. All of them.
So anyone, it was the aerial photograph. It shows in two pieces, the blue property line. This is an expanded property line from the last time we were here because additional property was acquired to increase the size of the project. On the lower portion of the exhibit between Herbert and Leonard is the parking area that we consider the off-site parking area. That parking area is existing today. We plan no modifications. It's purposefully. Oops. There are no, I don't know if this, this is working.
It's correct.
Okay, yeah, that battery thing.
Right.
I think the battery was stolen. It's on here.
Okay, there we go. The parking area between Herbert and East Leonard is existing. We don't propose nor any upgrades required for that parking area. There's currently no barrier-free parking stalls in that area, but that doesn't change our demand for parking. So the architect has designed the parking garage with additional barrier-free parking stalls to satisfy the entire demand. So if we were to take the entirety of the 242 parking stalls, calculate the number of barrier-free that are required, all of them are placed in the garage because, again, that's our primary barrier-free accessible route. So the architect will testify to that a little bit, but I just wanted to touch on why no barrier-free stalls were being provided in the ancillary lot. They're all within the garage because that's our primary use, our primary route. So what is proposed is an expansion from what we were here last time, but it is within the BR2 zone and is subject to the TSO, Transstation Overlay Zone. The two variances that we are requesting is one for build-in coverage, where build-in coverage is required to be 75 percent. We're proposing 76 percent, a 1% increase. Now, we're actually reducing impervious surface, and I'm going to scoot over to A2. A2 is the site plan rendering. We're actually reducing impervious surfaces with this development. Even though our structure coverage increases by 1%, the impervious coverage associated with the development is actually decreasing. So, and you'll hear from the architect as to ways that we intend to mitigate the potential negative impacts on the building coverage with amenity deck screen space that's actually located on the roof variance, which in essence is the structure coverage. So it's a, I think from an engineering perspective, a minor deviation, 1%, which would be offset by the architect's programming for the amenity decks and roof areas. The other variance that we are requesting is the space, the loading areas. We do provide technically three loading areas associated with this development. One on Oakland Street, which is across the top of A2, a second on Chestnut Street, which is at the bottom of A2, and then a limited loading drive-in area that's associated with the building that's also on Chestnut Street. Now, the loading area that is incorporated into the building is for, it's basically an amenity to the people that live there. It's a loading area that has a somewhat limited purpose. Larger trucks, larger vehicles making deliveries have the option to pull into a 34-by-18-foot loading area at the end of Oakland Street, or a loading area of nine by almost 50 feet, almost 47 feet on Chestnut Street. This is not a big deviation from what was proposed before. We had proposed similar-sized loading areas, but now with the intensity of the development slightly increased, I do want to just testify that these loading areas are sufficient for the anticipated needs of this development. That includes a very small retail area and cafe area that would most likely have UPS or box-sized deliveries, also for residential turnover when someone moves in. We want to plan for that and make it as convenient as possible. Therefore, this larger truck-sized loading area on Chestnut Street is provided for larger vehicles, for box size, I mean, it's interchangeable, but for box size at Oakland Street. These are useful. We're planning for it. There's a lot of buildings downtown and around the borough that don't have any loading areas, and public streets are barricaded for the use, and that's something that happens with an older town. But in this case, we have the ability to plan for it, we have planned for it, and the loading areas that we proposed work, even though it is a deviation in size from the Technically, an RSIS de minimis exception is required for the number of parking stalls. Even though we meet the borough's standard, 242 parking stalls required, 242 parking stalls provided, if you were to go to the RSIS and calculate it the way they do without the flavor of the local parking situation, they require 275 parking stalls, where 242 are provided. So we will go as part of our application and request a de minimis exception at the DCA level, which is not a super involved process, but it's something that we will do. The borough ordinance is met, though, with parking for the proposed development. I guess I can also touch on some of the design waivers. Many of them are architectural, and many of them haven't changed from the last time we were here, but because we have.
Mr. Kennedy, I appreciate your patience here if you could use this one.
Just hold it a little closer, we're not picking you up completely out of the system.
So the architect will go through this in a little more detail, but there is a two-floor parking garage with 147 parking stalls within the building itself, 57 residential apartments above. We have area of about 6,000 square feet of retail that wraps around on the Oakland Street side, and a small cafe of about 700 square feet is also on the Oakland Street side. This, although it's a little bit larger than last time, the same, similar amenity, similar layout and similar, slightly larger retail, but a similar breakdown in uses was proposed last time. With regard to the design waivers, because there's multifamily involved in the application, you have a series of multifamily requirements. One is that there must be a 25-foot setback in the right-of-way of all public streets, and with the way the ramps work into the parking, or down into the parking garages, they are ramped from the sidewalk. They're ramped right after the apron, they start down into their descent from Oakland Street or up from Chestnut Street. Because of the ramps, they have a small wall that comes out towards the right-of-ways, and those setbacks are not compliant with regard to your multifamily. So although these setbacks might only be a small curt wall, they are still setbacks of the principal structure. In addition, a 35-foot principal building setback requirement exists where zero is actually between the proposed apartments and the existing office building that is to remain. So that's really a function of us keeping the existing building, and technical compliance with that would require a vast redesign for really no portion, no purpose, because these buildings are interconnected and planned to be utilized in an integrated way. So to enforce that setback doesn't make sense in this situation. The architect will testify with regard to architectural features that are proposed to minimize the look or amassing of the building. Where the design standards require a building of no more than 175 feet in length, we propose 262 feet in length, but the architect has provided certain treatments in order to minimize that facade and provide certain breaks and architectural changes along that facade. In addition, no multifamily dwellings shall be located closer than 25 feet from any access drive or internal roadway. Being that the garage is integrated into this building, there is a zero setback by virtue of the way it works. And then number five, 0.5-foot handles in the lighting of parking areas, that's actually a requirement not only of the ordinance, but a slightly, there's a slightly enhanced standard under the multifamily dwelling act. The architect has stated that those lighting levels, in accordance with the state law, will be provided, therefore this 0.5 will be provided as well. So we no longer need a design waiver from 490-96K, which was the minimum lighting.
So Jim, from your perspective. Jim, from your perspective, with regard to the requested variances, if you analyze them with regard to whether they provide a benefit to the municipality as opposed to a substantial detriment, from an engineering perspective.
Well, from an engineering perspective, I think I testified with regard to the loading areas, and I see no negative impact for the slightly smaller-sized loading areas that we provide. We actually provide three, albeit in a different size. These three are designed within existing conditions. This is not something that we can really modify, and they make sense. They're safe, they're practical, and they implement safety, traffic safety, I'm sure Mr. Ray will testify about that, but traffic safety with regards to being able to pull a truck over and make a safe delivery to this building. With regard to the 1% structure coverage, that's imperceivable from a public standpoint. The amenity decks that are being proposed will provide an amelioration of that 1% structure coverage. And when I look at structure coverage, normally the negative impact with that is stormwater runoff from an impervious surface, but in this case, we're actually reducing impervious surface. So stormwater impacts are minimized, which is important, not only in the Borough Council's discussions of the green checklist, but reducing impervious surface is something that benefits stormwater runoff, benefits stormwater quality, and that this development does it.
Jim, with regard to both of those variances, your opinion from an engineering perspective, Jim, with regard to both of those variances, your opinion from an engineering perspective, does the ordinance grant those variances? Would that upset the zoning scheme or plan in this town or affect the dance?
It would have no impact on the development plan, because this is a site that's a mix of existing and proposed, where this is unique, it's uniquely affecting this property, and there is no negative impact with regard to those two variances from an engineering perspective.
And finally, again from engineering perspective, in the event where we grant the variances, would it have any adverse impact to the health and welfare of the community?
No.
All buildings would be built to code, and everything would be up to standards?
This is a substantial upgrade to this area, and from a health and safety perspective, these would be modern buildings with modern codes. We provide safe access, we provide safe loading, and this is only a benefit to this area.
Finally, with regard to the design waivers, in your opinion as an engineer, from an engineering perspective, would we grant that? Would that be a reasonable action in order to advance this development?
Yes.
If you had an opportunity to review the engineering design letter that was submitted by T and M--
I did, and I take no issue to any of the comments. What I'd like the board to balance, though, is the request for the rain garden. I know a lot of the developments, almost every development now, is asked to incorporate a rain garden on grade. We're suggesting that that rain garden be looked at as part of the amenity, because to infiltrate stormwater against a subsurface structure would really be against the best management practices. And what I mean by that is the rain garden, the whole intent and purpose of a rain garden is to accept runoff, to allow it to perk into the ground slowly and to filter total suspended solids or roof leader runoff. In this case, we have a two-story parking deck in approximate location to anywhere we would put the rain garden, and that would not be infiltrating against a garage or a basement or anything subsurface, it's just not a standard practice. So what we would request is that you look at what the architect proposes on the amenity decks and perhaps balance that against the request for an on-grade rain garden in the location. In addition, there's nowhere for us to actually outlet this rain garden to. With every rain garden, there's a design storm that it's designed for. Sometimes it's an inch of runoff, sometimes it's two inches of runoff. But in any case, when that amount of runoff is exceeded, we have to safely pass the remainder somewhere. And in this case, the only way to safely pass that would be to put a pipe over onto, out through a curb face or out into the railroad right-of-way, and for that second reason, it doesn't make sense given the design of this site. So that's my request, and I did talk to Mr. Herman about that. I think Mr. Jim was involved in those conversations as well. But that's really the only, of that letter, that's really the only comment that I need to bring up.
You could resolve all the other comments and issues in the review load between your design and the T and M conference.
That's correct. It's the rain garden on grade that really, I think, is better placed up on the roof in the amenity deck where people can benefit from it, not hidden behind walls that we can't outlet. That, I just think it's a better idea, and it would have a better practical purpose being up on the roof than down in a little corner of the site.
You agree? Yeah, I agree with what Jim was saying. I think that this application is really just done in the room, given that it's right up against a subsurface structure, it's just not the right application for it.
Mr. Kennedy, how many van accessible spaces are in the garage?
I'd have to look at the architect's plan--
That'd be an architect's question, I would have to know how many van accessible spaces.
Of the barrier free, there's two van accessible spaces.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Lance Blake, our architect, please. I'll go over to Mr. Blake though, he was set to do more as an expert already.
Yep.
Okay. Lance, did you prepare any exhibits to show before this evening?
Yes, I did.
He goes way back in the film.
I don't know if you can see both of them.
Mr. Cassidy gets her end. He's got a pre-existing condition, isn't he?
Sure. So I have, I have three exhibits that the board does not have, and now they're taking through the actual set that they're all covered in the middle.
Why don't you start with that? Lance--
Correct. Lance, you've got to use the microphone.
I'm going to start with the plans that were submitted, take you through a quick overview of the floor plans--
Now Lance, that's part of the plan set, and what plan sheet is that?
This one starts at A1.0--
Part of the architect's submission sheet, A1.0. You want to mark that seven, Mr. Lex? A3. All right, so Lance, can you just describe how this is accessed and the configuration and circulation within the parking deck?
Sure. So just to orient you to the top of the plan--
Can you clarify what A3 is, please?
A1.0 is the ground floor parking level.
Which is now A4.
So to the top of the plan, you can see Oakland Street and to the bottom Chestnut. On Oakland, we have access to the garage with a roughly 40-foot ramp that starts at the sidewalk and goes up, down, I'm sorry, up or down to a lower level in which we have approximately 60 cars or so. And we circulate around with the 24-foot wide aisles. We have handicap spaces on both ends. Also on the lower level, we have handicap access, accessible route, you know, out to both Bridge Street and out to Oakland Street to access the retail. Retail wraps around the corner of Oakland and Bridge in roughly 6,000 square feet, including a cafe to the right of the access ramp. We also on Oakland Street have a trash and recycling area that services the residential above. Now I'm on A1.1, which is the upper level--
Which you'll mark as A4.
Again, this is the exact same footprint in terms of coverage, but now we're accessing the garage from Chestnut Street, again with a roughly 40-foot ramp that takes us from the Chestnut Street elevation up to that level, which is roughly four or five feet above the Chestnut Street level. Parking configuration is pretty much the same, although on this level, we have our main lobby access or lobby for the residential, which is on the opposite side from where the retail is where it should be. We also have some other elements like bike storage, and again, we have our accessible routes out. We also, on both levels, so we can egress out of the residential, we also have an ancillary stair and elevator on the Oakland Street side, as well as a stair and elevator on the Chestnut Street side.
Lance, before you leave that, can we talk a little about the ADA spaces? Are they all in compliance with ADA requirements with regard to size, the grade of the site and the accessibility?
Yes.
And the van spaces also provide for additional access for handicap to get in and out of the vans?
Yes.
And it meets all of the standards included in the mark?
Yes.
What signage would be on those ADA spaces?
Well, they'll be signed with the proper code--
As required.
As required.
Now, you provided a two-way aisle at 24 foot?
Correct.
Okay. And could you just talk for a minute about the parking deck and fire subcode? Are we, the design is in compliance with the fire code, is that right?
The building, the garage, the residential units above will all be compliant with code.
Now, are these spaces going to be available for residents and also for the retail customers as needed?
Yes.
Now--
I wonder if I ask the question, are those spaces, there's going to be nothing dedicated to residences, or are they assigned to--
The residential will be assigned certain spaces.
They will have a certain number that will be theirs.
The majority of the residential spaces will be on the second level, which will be kind of more accessible to the actual lobby itself.
Where will the commercial--
Commercial spaces will be closer to, I'm referring to the plan right now, more towards the upper left-hand side.
On the second?
And first level as well.
Bridge and Oak--
Yeah, on the corner of Bridge and Oak.
And Lance, is it correct that one parking space will be assigned for each of the apartments or the 57 spaces, and then the additional spaces will be available?
Yes, that's correct.
Moving forward, when you designed the residential section, you understand the ordinance had requirements for minimum apartment size for one bedrooms, two bedrooms, so forth?
That's correct, yes.
Will you provide one and two bedrooms in this, because the zone only admits one and two bedrooms, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And what is, can you advise the board as to the size of the minimum size of any of the one bedrooms to demonstrate compliance with the ordinance and likewise for the two bedrooms?
Minimum size one bedroom is 900 square feet, and we exceed those in most cases. We're not under the 900, and the two bedrooms require 1,100 square feet, and we do comply with those if not exceed in many cases.
And there's an ordinance standard that speaks about 70 square foot being, it's designated, if it isn't designated for use, it would be a bedroom. Do you have any situations like that where the entire apartment is designated and would have either one or two bedrooms?
That's correct.
So the second and third floors, they have the same basic floor plan?
Yes, except on the, what's designated as the second level, A1.2, that's the level where we have our amenity decks.
Can I have it marked as A5, please?
So A5 is a typical floor. We have center, basically a center corridor with units on each side and a combination of one and two bedrooms. On each side of the main legged building, we have two very generous sized amenity decks. Although we haven't totally designed them yet, I have a couple of images that will kind of be good visuals for you to kind of get the feeling for what we're going to try to achieve, both in combination with green space and designing a rain garden with hardscape, softscape, furniture, and amenities for the residents to enjoy. So what I'll do is-- I'm going to present this exhibit.
I'll ask that to be marked as A6. Describe now to the board what you're proposing for the amenity deck.
So A6 is a visualization of other amenity decks that will strongly kind of give you the idea of what we're trying to achieve on these decks. You can see on the image to the right, there's a combination of some grass with gravel border, a decking with furniture, you know, other types of furniture, pergola. There might be also an area for, you know, like a fire pit or possibly place the barbecue. On the image to the right, you can see there's also perimeter plantings, which we anticipate will be on our deck as well, and again, some covered pergolas, areas for residents to, you know, just sit, relax, enjoy, possibly, you know, have a meal together.
Lance, one of the things we've spoken about is the idea that we would provide--
You have to pass that around. Yes, that's not an actual rendering, no, correct? What you're planning, it looks like we have Seattle in the background.
This is not--
I was checking.
We have not fully designed, we have not designed the decks yet, but I wanted to present sort of an image of, you know, kind of what we're thinking about. But we haven't programmed it, we haven't programmed it, we haven't designed it yet. But it gives you the flavor for what we're going to be planning.
Did you also prepare readings of the proposed elevations?
I did. So the first, the first view, we have two views. The first view is a snapshot of the corner of Oakland and Bridge--
I'd like to have you mark A7, please.
I'll have to write on it.
We have fans of Roger up here on the side. I'm not going to go there. Let me get some Rogers there.
Lance, what is this a rendering?
This is a rendering, basically a computer-generated, photorealistic rendering of the corner of Oakland and Bridge of the building. And you can see, basically, this is where the retail is on the ground floor. We believe that'll lay a lot of life to the streetscape above it where we have our units. We can see a variety of breaks and material, texture and material breaks. The major materials on this particular facade is a, we'll call it a charcoal with a little bit of red, with a little bit of burgundy, textured brick. We have inset balconies that are kind of staggered throughout the three floors, so it doesn't give you that sort of boring alignment, you know, it gives it a lot more life. We have a lot of, a lot of percentage of glass, you know, which will let maximum light into the units. Also, we're kind of surrounding that brick, that brick element with what we'll call a composite material, which is like an eyebrow that meanders up and down and around, around the building as an architectural element. On the ground level, surrounding the storefronts, we're proposing a, it's like a composite wood material, looks like wood, but it's more of a cementitious type of material, which is maintenance-free, but it gives the warmth of wood. Some other materials around the base where you come into the garage, the look of board form concrete. Also, the idea of a sign, you know, which identifies the building, the rail, that kind of floats in between two of the vertical eyebrows. And then as a backdrop, there's a material, which is a porcelain material that looks like corcet steel, like a rusted, like a rusting steel. So we're combining a lot of very rich, very textural and contrasting materials.
Okay, but what, can you orientate me, like, where's the rail, where is that, is that west?
The rail is on Oakland, facing Oakland Street.
This is the, yeah.
The next visual is a computer-generated--
Mark A8.
Photoreal--
I marked it. I marked it.
So this is taken at the corner of Bridge and Chestnut, where the parking lot is. So you can see that the building kind of wraps around the parking lot in an L shape, and on-- And on one of, I'll call it at the juncture of the two legs, is where one of our main amenity decks will be. Again, we're utilizing the same mixture of materials, however, in this particular case and also on the other, other side of the long leg of the building, we're also adding what we'll call a cement panel, like a hardy type plank, in a lighter, in a lighter tone. So you have the contrast of the darker brick and the lighter tone of the hardy panel. And again, that's all kind of framed and surrounded by the composite eyebrow material.
And Lance, the ordinance has a 175-foot length restriction. Is that, is this the area where we violate that portion of the ordinance?
Well, yeah, if you, if you look at the overall length from Chestnut, I'm sorry, from Oakland to Chestnut, yeah, that exceeds the ordinance. But if you look at how it's, you know, broken up, obviously, with the leg, the L of the leg. And then on the other side as well, we have multiple breaks within the building, even though it's not an L shape on that side for the full run. But if you look at the elevations, which is in the set, you can see that we have a lot of, a lot of breaks within the building.
So is your testimony as an architect, based on the differing points of that elevation facing Bridge Street, first the Oakland side is extended towards Bridge and then the other two sections are segregated, these in colors, and the materials in use?
Correct, yes.
And that, in your opinion, as an architect, does that offset the impacts that the ordinance is seeking to avoid along continuous building?
Yes, it definitely.
Now, if the board would-
Mr. Blake, excuse me one second, Mr. Chanko. How long is, shall we say, the long L part of the building?
This part here?
Yeah, from Chestnut to Oakland, approximately.
From Chestnut to Oakland, 267 feet, seven inches.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, you meant from the-
From the crux of the edge to Chestnut.
So from this point?
Well, from this point, um... I would say it's probably about 1, I would say it's probably about 165, roughly, thereabouts.
So it relates to that particular request, that's a balance from the ordinance requirement. And in that regard, in your opinion, does the proposed design upset zoning scheme and plan of the municipality?
No.
And basically, what you just testified to, the different features of that wall, is a basis for that determination that's working?
Yes, even within, even within the leg of this facade, there are horizontal breaks and vertical breaks. You can see with the material as well as ins and outs.
And in your opinion, as an architect, would the board grant this various many adverse impact on the health and safety of the community?
Uh, no.
In fact, the building would be, to all standards, enhanced from a fire and other safety provisions will exist in?
Yes, yes, it will.
Okay. So I have no other direct questions for Mr. Blake.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Blake?
The setback on Bridge Avenue. It's the smaller L part.
Over here.
But is it right up against sidewalk or is there?
No, no, there is, there is a setback. I believe it falls, falls within the, a lot of the setback.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not seeking to- Do you know if that's improving on the current position of the building that's there now?
The restaurant?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions?
As of present, there's business parking on Oakland. It's not very used right now. Rakiop is empty, et cetera. Are we going to maintain the, in the rendering, if it don't affect the parking on Oakland, is going to be maintained?
I believe that's going to be maintained.
You also have access to the parking deck for those customers there. So the street parking would remain along with the access to the ordinance? We could not count the street parking as, or will we?
The Oakland Street parking exists and will remain.
I have one other question. On Chestnut, the, what are we providing as far as pedestrian safety for the exit from the underground parking, especially on Sundays with the church there? There's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of cars, when the trains pile up, especially in rush hour, they try to come out of the parking lots that already exist very quickly. What are we going to do to make sure that the site is maintained and maybe discouraging people to pull out there too quickly on Chestnut in particular?
You're talking about cars, vehicles exiting on-
Chestnut in particular, Sundays, it's where you're getting the traffic.
Well, in terms of stop signs or traffic signs, I can't really speak to that. Oh, well, yes, I mean, the, the, there will be gates, yes. It will be, it will be secure, yes.
Anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Blake? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Blake?
Mr. Chairman, John Ray, please. John, you were asked to prepare a traffic analysis and parking analysis, rather, to make sure it was adequate. Parking needs clear, safe access and good circulation throughout the design of the parking deck and the parking lot.
That's correct.
Were you able to do that?
Yes.
And what did you find?
Okay, I have a traffic statement, which is dated September 28th, 2018. And basically, what the traffic statement takes into consideration is a review of the site plan with respect to the access to the parking areas, the parking garage and things of that nature, as well as a traffic generation estimate for the new uses which are being proposed. The office space, as everyone knows, currently exists, but we will be adding 57 residential units and approximately 7,600 square feet of retail space, which includes the cafe space. And so I went to the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual. I generated traffic for the new uses that are being proposed. And essentially, we're looking at about 43 peak hour trips during the morning peak hour and a little over 100 peak hour trips during the afternoon peak hour as a result of the residential units and the retail space. It is my opinion, based on the location of this project, as proximate to the train station as it is, that it's my expectation, the vehicle ownership in the 57 residential units will be somewhat lower than what would be expected at a suburban location out on the highway due to the proximity of the train station. I also believe that the retail space, some of that will be geared to commuters using the train station and so it will generate some foot traffic. And also, retail space, particularly during the afternoon peak hour, a lot of the traffic that is generated is passed by traffic that's on the road already passing the site. I believe the net impact of all of this will be a relatively, you know, small increase in new traffic drawn to the area. There will be some additional traffic that will be generated as a result of these changes. I do not believe it will have a significant impact on the, the most critical intersection in the immediate area of the site is the multi-way stop at Chestnut Street and Bridge Avenue. And I don't think this is going to have a significant or even measurable impact on the operation of that four-way stop-controlled intersection. The access has been testified to by Mr. Kennedy and to a certain extent by Mr. Blake. The access to the parking garages is safe and adequate. The 24-foot aisle widths in the parking garage meet the standard 24-foot width that we need for two-way circulation. The one comment that's in the T and M review letter that I looked at and I thought we could perhaps do something about is that some of the parking spaces that are in the garage that are at the end of the aisles, that are in tight spaces more or less, we can probably designate those spaces for compact vehicles. It's probably only a handful of spaces anyway, so that shouldn't be a big deal and we can agree to do that. An overall unbalance, I think it's a project that will fit well within the area with respect to, we all know traffic conditions in Red Bank are like. I've done traffic studies in the borough before. This is not something that is going to exacerbate those traffic issues that we have during peak hours to a significant extent, in my opinion.
John, did you also, did you also study and are you able to comment on the adequacy of the parking provided?
Yes, the parking that has been provided at 242 parking spaces meets the borough's ordinance requirement for the residential, for the office and for the retail space. And in reality, there will be a shared parking situation that will develop. It is my opinion, having done quite a few shared parking studies, that the real, actual peak parking demand for the three uses will be somewhat on the order of 170 to 200 parking spaces, leaving a healthy surplus. Because we do have, with the off-site parking lot and the garage, we do have 242 parking spaces. I do not believe you're ever going to see more than 200 vehicles parked in those, in the garage and in the off-site lot at any point in time, due to the shared parking that's going to occur. And just briefly, the reason why I come to that conclusion, the residential parking peaks late in the evening, usually after 10:00 PM to about 6:00 in the morning. The office peaks at a completely different time on weekdays, between 9:00 in the morning and 5:00, 6:00 in the afternoon. And of course, the retail has a different peak itself too, usually on weekends. So when you add all those things together and the fact that we calculated the parking demand on a cumulative basis, rather than taking shared parking into consideration, I believe we will, at the end of the day, have a healthy surplus of parking, should this project be approved.
I have a question maybe for Mr. Chanko. I'm trying to recall on the previous application, how we dealt with the old parking area and tied it in to the-
Hey, Mr. Lexi, I did not present that application, but give me a second.
There's some type of deed.
There was an agreement that it would be restricted via deed for use for this property.
That's, that's my recollection. Although you weren't here, the testimony was that the adjacent lot across would be restricted for use for the owners of this particular lot, whoever that might be. It might be Mr. Denholtz, it might be a corporation, but as long as there's a transfer, that deed is restricted for the use of parking.
Well, it seems to me the restriction we need is that it remains in service with this-
That's correct.
That's because the whole idea that they're tied together, they cannot be sold or that lot can't be transferred out.
Well, it could be sold, the use has to remain with this property, which of course will, my client agrees to that, will, in the event the board approves it, will propose language for your professional-
It will work out between the engineer and myself and you. Absolutely.
Mr. Ray, what is the current service level of the year's section of Chestnut and Bridge?
Well, based on my observations during the afternoon peak hour, it's probably a borderline C to D condition. I've been out there at 5:00 in the afternoon, watch what happens when trains come into the station. Chestnut Street is like a fairly major east-west connector, collector roadway. Bridge Avenue, of course, is a fairly major north-south collector and it's a busy intersection, but it seems to function well as a four-way, multi-way stop. And I don't think there's enough traffic out there to warrant installation of a signal. A four-way stop seems to be working fairly well. Like I said, probably at a borderline C, D condition today.
Okay. And Mr. Chanko, perhaps a question for your client, but for you right now, there's certainly, as Mr. Ray said, he doesn't necessarily foresee more than 200 cars being used at any one time. I'd like to make sure that, and Mike, we could make this a restriction if his client will agree, that there'll be no leasing of parking spaces on this property or in this structure that are not related to tenants in the building, whether it's residents or retail. Meaning, you could probably get a pretty penny renting spaces to commuters. And I want to make it clear that we wouldn't want that to be the case.
Well, one of the things that my client has discussed with the nearby church, that on the weekend, my client has discussed with the nearby church, that on the weekend, they may, they may want some of the parking and my client would like to be able to provide that to the church on Sundays that are on service days. Subject to Mr. Ray's analysis, it seems that that is something that would certainly be available.
Yeah, we're not concerned about- I'm not concerned about commuter parking. Sunday, you know, for the, for the church, that's one thing, but regular for-
My clients are full agreement with your statement, except for that condition, that's why I brought it forward and I frankly expected you to say exactly what you just said.
That's fine, thank you.
Well, we're going to have the ambition, but we will indicate-
In the condition, I'd like, please reference that because, you know, the next generation of the expecters will understand it the same.
Is anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Ray? Anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Ray? You're all just here because you had nothing better to do tonight, huh?
No ballgame tonight.
No, there's a football game. Mr. Chairman, through permission, I'll call Andrew Janno, our planner, in my last witness.
Good evening.
Andy, did you, or others under your direction, review the request for this application, variances, waivers and prepare a planning report for the board?
Certainly. In preparation for this evening, we reviewed your ordinances, your master plan, the application before this court. I also appeared, the previous application for the 45 units that were presented before this court and have used that as the basis for my testimony this evening.
So could you provide the board your analysis of the requested variances for this version of the design?
General, I don't think we need to go step by step by step.
No, I think, I think Mr. Kennedy did a wonderful job.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll speak briefly about the, the ordinance, the master plan and then go right to the justifications for the variances. So we discussed this as in the train station overlay district of the VR2 Business Residential District. And quite frankly, the application is very much on point with the purposes of the TSO District. The stated purposes for the TSO zoning overlay are to encourage a mix, as per your ordinance, to encourage a mix of retail, commercial uses at street level with increased residential density on floors above street level, to create a mixed residential and commercial neighborhood that relies predominantly on public transportation as the primary means of travel. In general, applications under this overlay standard are intended and has a couple of criteria here which-
Andy, let me interrupt you. Are you satisfied that this design meets the intent and standard of that ordinance?
I would say it's very much on point and furthers the very goals articulated in the TOS overall.
Are you particularly aware of the variances that were requested? Could you just address those in terms of your analysis of whether or not the board could grant those variances in accordance with the requirements of the Section 70 of the annual?
Certainly. The variances requested tonight are both, both essentially bulk variances. There are also design waivers, which are adjudicated under a lesser criteria. But with respect to the two variances, those are C2 variances. Basically, those should be considered by this board under what's the traditional balance test. Essentially, in the balance test, we have to discuss that this is a unique situation, a unique piece of property, and it is, that we are advancing the purposes of the municipal land use law and we are for the very stated purposes of the TSO District and compliance with the benefits of this in terms of advancing those goals. And we have to talk about the benefits of this outweighing the detriments. The benefits, I think, are quite clear. We have a unique piece of property in a situation of an assemblage of some adequate massing to provide the opportunity to provide not only some street-level retail proximate to the train station, but also housing proximate to the train station in order to encourage essentially a pedestrian-friendly community that can take advantage of mass transit. In doing that, it furthers the goals of the TOS District that was articulated by your ordinance and your master plan. It provides an opportunity to live near public transportation and to diminish reliance on other forms of transportation. on other forms of transportation such as cars. And in doing so, it also advocates and advances purpose of your zoning ordinance and your master plan. In terms of the negative criteria when adjudicating a C2 variance, we have to discuss the fact that it doesn't have a detrimental impact on your ordinance or master plan. In this case, it doesn't, it very much furthers those, and that does not have a detrimental impact upon the neighborhood or the community. And it doesn't. Quite frankly, it's an improvement to the community visually, structurally, circulation-wise. It provides for housing opportunities close to public transportation. It is consistent with the ordinance in terms of what would be typically the measure in terms of nuisances. The variance here, in fact, while seeking a little bit of an increase in building coverage, actually diminishes total impervious, as Mr. Kennedy said, so there is no detriment to what we consider under stormwater criteria. We need parking. It's all the anticipated impacts in terms of noise, trash collection, and the like, so I think it's very much something that's consistent and cannot be deemed to be a negative impact on the community in any way, shape, or form. Having said that, I think it does satisfy the criteria for a C2 variance under the balance test, and in fact, can be approved and create a very nice addition to the community, particularly at the train station.
And likewise, with regard to the loading spaces, are you satisfied that while they don't meet the design standards and adequate for the purpose intended?
Functionally, they're actually on point. The retail that's being proposed here is not large-scale retail. It is going to rely on smaller vehicles, van deliveries. The larger space along Chestnut is certainly adequate for the move-in, move-out situation. And quite frankly, it provides a very comfortable set of loading spaces that would function for this building in particular. I think they're very much on point.
From a planning perspective of your analysis, can you determine that the board that created this variance would not upset the zones, given the planning you're working with?
No, in fact, I think it would further the very goals of that.
And likewise, would that, would adversity affect the health of the whole family and community?
It will not.
And with regard to the design waivers, and I think we identified five of them?
Yes.
Would you like to each of those waivers, have you analyzed each of them?
We have, and again, it's a situation where we're creating a building that's somewhat unique with the parking garage in terms of the facade of the building. There's significant articulation, and I think was brought forth by the chairman, that the face that's in question is actually under the criteria, the exposed face. We do have the break at the L in the building, but the facade has a variety of treatments, textures, and articulations that are intended to soften the massing, and that is the intent of that design standard in order not to create a large massing of the monolithic type of facade. That's not the case here. With respect to the setbacks, you heard the testimony, that those relate primarily to the curving and the entries to the garage, and that's a necessity here in order for this building to function properly and as intended within the TOS zone. So I don't believe there's any detrimental impact, and in fact, these design waivers will in fact create what I believe to be a very attractive and integrated building to the community and to the adjoining commercial buildings.
So your professional opinion is the plan, you determine that the board would block the design, would be reasonable exercise of the authority in order to carry out the purposes of your ordinance?
I do.
Any other questions of Mr. Jano?
Anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Jano?
Yes, I do. Can you speak more, I don't know if you're the right person, to the affordable housing component of the project?
Well, may I? Can you understand?
Into the mic, please, thank you.
My client intends to comply with the municipal ordinance. We understand the ordinance is currently under review. In my consultation with the various municipal officials involved with the affordable housing, we are requesting that the rules in place at the time we apply for our building permits or at some point in that early stage be applicable to this site, and my client agrees to comply with that. This will require nine of affordable units.
And they will be on-site or...?
If the ordinance provides for an option to move some of them or all of them off-site, my client will have to consider that. We don't have, that has not yet been determined.
When will it?
What's the ordinance going to say?
Going to say what it says now?
No, no, we have to adopt you.
It isn't...
That's what he's saying, in other words, whatever the...
If it says... This, if the ordinance permits...
Microphone.
If the ordinance permits locating some of the affordable units off-site, my client will have to consider that option. Additionally, this zone does not permit three-bedroom apartments. It's one and two bedrooms, and we are in compliance with the zone. So in terms of the affordable housing, the number of units will be met, and the ordinance conditions in place at the time we're ready to start the project will be applied, and my client has instructed me to advise the board that we will be in compliance with that ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. How about, Mr. Parker? Is the garbage going to be private, garbage?
The answer to that is yes, and...
How often load that, because I know it was raised by the engineer about a month ago.
I don't think that the number of pickups is yet determined. The area for store, for the trash collection is reasonably sized, but it would be at least two or three times a week. If needed to be more, they would of course do that.
Well, I mean, the way we've done that is that you'd have to comply with the affordable health requirements, and depending, I mean, if you need to pick it up every day, then you have to pick it up every day, depending on what the... Retail use. The... Retail use and the...
The cafe.
It's going to be your responsibility.
Yes, fully understood, and it is my client's intention to have a first-class, an A-class building here and operate it that way. And if we didn't get rid of the trash on the front, that would be a major upset to the tenants and to my client's investment.
Anyone else on the board? Does anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Jano? Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have no further testimony. I was just, you know, the reason that I'm here is to ask you to approve this application and to vote for it, so...
That's what we're going to consider.
I'd like you to consider...
I thought you didn't have anything to do tonight, that's why you weren't here.
I really just came by to say hello, this is your time. I would like to ask the board to federally consider the application. I think it's well-considered. It meets requirements of the ordinance. I think it's a great design area for the area, and I have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Denhols and can tell you that he is as creative a developer as you're going to find anywhere in our area, and this is going to be a super project in Red Bank. I'm going to ask the board to acquit me.
Well, we liked it last time.
I hope you like it a little more now.
Anyone have a motion?
Well, I have a motion, and I think it's probably pertinent to send forward the line. As the chairman, Mr. Chairman, you said we did approve it the last time. We thought that it was good use and retooling of the property. This is not just a development of a site. This is a recreation of a neighborhood that, when I was growing up, was very, very active and vibrant. There was a lot of transitional housing, there was single and two-family houses up and down that street. Times change. I think that the needs that we have right now in the train station development area is creating what I think is, is going to be very attractive, retooling of this property with some really cool urbanist feel to it, which will attract younger people and not those not so young who want to live in that type of housing, be convenient to transportation and amenities, and walk instead of use their fuel-guzzling cars. So I think that the design, I think in my opinion, captures the appropriate feel. It's, it's a testament to, and again, I've known Mr. Denhols' work in a number of other municipalities, and as you said, he is a first-class builder, and I think that it's the appropriate space utilization for this. So I would love, I would like to move it to requests for variances are being minimized. And what I like about this project is that the open space, I think, is addressed in a very intelligent way, in a practical way, because the last thing you want to do is have a ground-floor yard next to a train track. Here, by moving the amenities to the roof, not only is it cool, but I think it really uses the site the way it should be used. So I'll move it.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes. One second forward, just to make sure that we're clear that the engineer's letter will be complied with.
That was the testimony of Mr. Kennedy, and I represent that to you.
And as well as the restriction regarding parking for use by non-tenants?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And also, there should be obviously a tying in of the subsidiary lot to this lot.
Yes, of course.
The last restriction you were just...
Positive guarantees to this...
And I, I am remiss, I apologize. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions on the application? I apologize that I forgot that. Please come forward and use the mic.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Want to raise your hand, sir?
Yes.
Just want to tell truth, all truth, nothing else.
I do.
Tell us who you are.
My name is Peter Sobiero. I'm the owner of Mayo Auto Service for 43 years on 165 Madison Street, and... It's S-O-B as a Victor, I-E-R-O.
Peter, I still have all the...
I know you do. I've done a lot of work for you over the years. I just wanted to say, you know, my family's grown up in Red Bank. My father had seaborne oil and fuel for eons of years. And I'm a local guy here, and I had a business, and I just want the board to know that I've seen what's going on on the West Side, and I can't be any more excited about what's going on, whether it's Station Place, or it's the West Side Lofts, or the old Anderson Building being turned over and sickles. This project, I think, is a great asset to the West Side. Obviously, it has a good impact on my business because it brings more people in, more vehicles to be serviced, and what have you. But I just want the board to know that I'm all in favor of this project. I think it's a great asset to the community.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else, from the public have any questions or comments?
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Tom Swilsh, Councilman Ballard, Damian Cuso, Barbara Boas. Has a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take an incredibly brief 10-minute break, please.
Mr. Brooks, I want to talk to you. When's your next shade tree committee meeting?
Tomorrow.
Where? Where?
Upstairs.
Which floor?
Third.
Huh?
Third.
What time?
I always have to look at you.
Tomorrow, third or at 7:00?
Robinson's is one time. Fairhaven's...
I know, I know. Okay, tomorrow at 7:00. Oh, I should turn this off.